Probably shortly, I haven't.
Oh, I had one.
I already.
Let me double check. Good morning. All right. Today is July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is now nine oh one A M. I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners. I'll call this meeting of the Commissioners to their order. If you do have your cell phones, if you could silence them, please. And we'll try to speak up. We got that fan running. I know that makes a lot of noise, but if we don't, we'll all be sweating before very long in here. So bear with us on that, please. If you would please join me for the pledge and for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, and we just ask that as we come together to meet here today and to do business, we ask that you would be with us. We ask, Father, for your guidance. We ask for your wisdom, for your direction. And, Lord, we just pray that the things that we do and say could be in accordance to your will. We ask this in Jesus and in Amen.
Amen.
Okay, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Day.
Here.
Mr. Candace.
There.
Mr. Flowers. And Kirk to the board.
Okay. Audience introductions. Let's start with Brayden.
Brayden Wilson, Director of Land Management.
Wilson Gardens.
Bob Sagerhoff.
Where is the resident of Custer County?
Resident.
Galen Reddack, President of Custer County.
Jim Chaplin, the Rural Custer County.
Okay, and if anyone goes to speak here later, if you could identify yourself for the record, that would be great. Did you get all the names? We do have a few people online as well, so same thing, if you could identify yourself. Any amendments to the agenda? Yes. Okay. I would have a couple of things I would bring up real fast before we get in. I did send both of you gentlemen that letter of support for the land swap between Rainbow Trail and Forest Service. And if you guys like the way that looks, we could get that signed today and get that sent out.
Yeah, I'm good. It looked good.
Okay.
Good enough.
Well, that sounds good. How about you, sir?
I'm fine. Good. Thank you for doing that.
And then I would just bring up to your attention as well. I think we all got that, the thank you letter that we got from the Custer County EMS.
Yep.
Okay.
Assuming they got their concrete repaired, I haven't been over there with.
I believe they have, yes. Okay. No amendments, so at this time, then I would open up the floor for public comment. If you have anything to comment on that's not on the agenda, feel free to do so. Not seen anything online, I would say. Okay, have no unfinished business?
It comes, Dan.
Right. So we have no unfinished business?
Bob's raising his hand back.
I could do what you were saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll try to speak up.
All right.
We have no unfinished business on, so I will be moving on to the new business on the agenda. I think I know why. I was there twenty minutes this morning. Sir.
May I enter? I have an issue.
Oh, you have something to comment on?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Yes, go ahead. You may come up.
We need breaks, Andy.
You've got breaks in these darn things. Okay. My name is Bob Sagerhoff, resident of Custer County, ownership of property in town west of and rural Custer County. This morning, I do want to concern myself with an issue that was brought forth under resolution two four five two one one, and that has to do with the Commissioners' responsibilities and responsibilities and obligations. In that document, I'm not going to read it. You've all are familiar with it. But I feel as though there are some issues that I did bring up in a previous meeting. My concerns about Mr. Flowers, Commissioner Flowers. And some of the things I highlighted very quickly is, you know, you are to perform in an ethical and business manner. Your responsibilities of the public trust and your fiduciary obligation is to the people of Custer County, once again, public trust. And the benefits, you know, financial benefits of any one of you three has to be in the open and not show favoritism, which was done by Mr. Flowers previously. I am concerned about this document, and I feel as though the three Commissioners should have a discussion on this issue, if it's an executive session or wherever, as to the realities of this. And I feel as though something should be done on the ethical side of this particular issue. Couple with that, we've got to also remember that a lot of these things that are coming up here in the last month are more recent than that, are some of the issues, you know, that we're going to be seeing on the ballot. And it is on the ballot showing that Mr. Flowers violated twenty-four dash eighteen dash one oh nine parent three parent A C R S in multiple respects. Also, there is a complaint that was made by Jackie Hobby against the county Commissioners. This document, I believe you all have it, possibly. Okay, with all of this in mind, I feel as though we should take a step back and analyze everything. And as far as going forward, as far as a county administrator, I think that should go on hold. I think we should get all these issues taken care of and know exactly what direction we're going to be going in the future with an administrative assistant, county manager, whatever your terminology is going to be there. So I feel as though we should have a moratorium on any of these issues, probably for the next, I know in this complaint there are about ninety days, but something in that affects thirty to ninety days to have the three of you come to some type of decisions on all of this, and also for the county, the residents of this county to have an opportunity to understand what's going on. And I think that we're moving a little bit too quick. Being in that position, I know that we'd like to move things along, but I think now with all this information, I think it's time to sit back, put a moratorium on a number of things, primarily today, the county manager issue. So that's my recommendation. I did ask for Tom's resignation in the previous meeting. I will ask that, you know, you have some options. Tom could resign at this point. You know, the county, the three Commissioners could get together and make some type of a determination on this document before we go forward. So I thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Where you have second highlighted that you want us to pay particular attention to, do you have a copy of that for us?
No. I walked in.
I appreciate.
And I do have some, yes.
You can.
I do have issues that are highlighted.
Read that resolution number again.
Okay, the resolution number is twenty-two dash one seven. And it's filed in the Custer County Courthouse under reception number two four five two one one. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
I had a couple of comments.
Is it in regards to something on the agenda or not on the agenda?
Well, it's regarding the county manager position.
So.
But not in regards to what you have on the agenda.
Okay. You may go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to present to you, in addition to for several other citizens, many. We question your predisposed actions of pushing for accounting manager. More specifically, your biased agenda of promoting Brayden Wilson as Custer County Manager. Your path for such a move has been nothing short of a disaster, riddled with problems and severely lacking citizen support. Mr. Cinderhoff went over several of the things that I would have said. The jockeying between agreeing to having a presentation, then not having it. And now again, it's not on the July nineteenth agenda. It just feels like there's a rush for something that really isn't understood why such a rush. Mr. Flowers says that he's taken two and a half years to do this. I know your first workshop that we were aware of was January eleventh. Then there was another meeting with the executive session. So we're asking the same thing Mr. Cinderhoff is. Let's slow down. Let's take a break. You've got the determination letter that has come in. We have a recall going on, and there's this rush to get a county manager when it was posted without a job description that was already, it's not a complete job description. It was not refined in detail to what it should be. The application, is it what an application should be for that type of position, in my opinion? We're just asking, let's take care of some business that the county has that's serious. See where that brings the county to, and then make moves forward to make decisions and hear this presentation. And that's what we respectfully ask you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. And I would ask, I guess, were you keeping that on the nineteenth year presentation, Bill?
No, we decided we weren't. Because we were going to wait and see what happened that wouldn't.
I think you can bring your presentation anytime you want.
So I'll make a statement here in a minute. I hadn't even thought of what they're talking about. I have some thoughts.
That's good. Anyone else?
And Jim Chaplin, and I would just like to say that I very strongly agree with the two people that just spoke. I feel the same way. And I think if you're going to have a county manager position, that is something that should go before the voters, not just a decision of whatever you're.
Thank you, sir. Check online again. Anyone else say? Okay, thank you. So there is no unfinished business? So there is no unfinished business. So new business. And so the comment will be allowed before we vote on, on these individual items. In specific to these items. We have the consideration of approval of the job description for county manager. You have that. Did you, did you have a statement you wanted?
Yeah, I do. You can just describe what you got going on.
Okay.
You can either do it after somebody makes a motion or I can make a statement in front of it. I do want to say something about some of the things I just.
Yeah, let's go ahead and deal with that. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that before we get into this other. If you would like to go ahead and speak, let's do that.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I hate to start with a bad note, but I don't think it's a bad note. We had a wonderful time over the last week with the fair going on successfully, the rodeo success. I had a great meeting and we're not gonna report on it with the upper arc guys and the airport stuff that's going on. And I was hoping to be able to state those things, but it's not important right now after hearing what I've heard. I did have a meeting that is pertinent to this, and I mentioned it in the last meeting that the road and bridge guys, because of the statement that was made by, I think it was Rick and some others on the cost of building roads in the county and balancing that against how you're spending the money, you know, why are we doing it wisely? Got looking at it seriously. And in fact, we know that the two most important critical positions we have in the departments is the sheriff for protection. People we need to man there and give them adequate stuff to get them to stay in housing and the other is road and bridge. It is a service. And I mentioned this, but I don't think everybody's heard it. It affects every tax district we have. The school, the clinic, the fire departments can go on and on with all of them, every one of them. And so it's a critical deal. And then I got talking to Vince about it because this is gonna be important for budgets that I mentioned in the last meeting. They have a manpower. I call it manpower, billets. And they have eighteen approved, right? There are three short and they have been, so they're undermanned right now. And their minimum wage is seventeen bucks an hour. That's for a truck driver. Now, out of school, a truck driver can get twenty-five bucks an hour going anywhere and making some mistakes somewhere else. But, but we can't even attract anybody for seventeen bucks an hour. That's why we have free vacancies now. Or to keep them, they can, they'll rotate out, get some experience with us and move out. Of the fifteen that are left, they're servicing the roads and doing a heck of a job. They just got done with coal fax, somebody was brought in and was talking about that. Eighty thousand dollars oil spent. And I asked Vince because of that, I said, give me the real numbers. What, what's going on there? I'm not gonna get into the details, but he, he did a good job. And only Vince can do on his piece of paper and a pit lid pencil. But he went through the, the main thing, road based mag fluoride, chip seal asphalt. You know, making a road, all those kinds of things cost money. It's not just the labor. It's the materials and materials have gone out of sight. And I know that, and then I asked him what their, you know, the cost is and all that. We can go through that later. But because of that, I got thinking sort of what what I just heard some of it was, but we gotta, we gotta prioritize what we're doing, our immediate priorities. We've agreed to do a county commissioners when we voted on. And it's real, a manager position. And we were gonna do some of the correcting that Bob brought up and Ann brought up and, and do it right. We made, we made a mistake. And somebody said it was asinine. I looked it up. Do you know what asinine means? Have you looked it up? It means doing something extremely stupid or foolish. I don't want to continue to do foolish things. We, we posted something. We were foolish because it wasn't legally posted. That's why we're doing this now. We didn't have the salary range in there. So it's important for us to get through what we gotta do to do that, to continue to hire the right guy at the right time. Our, we have to follow our own personnel policies. We have a five day posting limit, but is that, that's the minimum. And I think posting it, I think it was wise to postpone voting on the nineteenth and it was smart to get out of the nineteenth commitment. Because we want the right guy, not, we're not rushing to get somebody. And I, I remember hearing, who was it? It was Michael Foster that pointed out, let's not rush to get somebody. Let's, let's rush to get Mr. Right. Let's do the, the right thing to get Mr. Right. So that's what we need to discuss today. We have to discuss, are we gonna post it for what period of time and where to get the right person for the, for the money we can afford? But then I got looking at, then, and then in the middle of all this, the rodeo is going on, we, we hear there's a lawsuit that has been the complaint filed, I guess, and it's valid, I guess. And I, and I don't know everybody, you showed a copy of it. We have to do that and we're, and I think we're gonna discuss, we need an executive session. So we consider and make the right moves, not a foolish move, the right move. Handle that because that's gonna cost the county more money in the law, you know, it's not maybe directly, everybody says, oh, the insurance has covered, insurance rates will go up or they'll drop this. And it not affects just the taxpayers here. It affects taxpayers in the whole state. Cause all the rates go up if lawsuits are successful. And that's why we need Dan and his advice. I know he can't defend this, but CTSI will for us, but we need to take good advice from Dan and how we approach that. I don't know what we're gonna do yet. I haven't even thought about it. I've been breathing meat juice all weekend flipping burgers. So the lawsuit matters. And, and, and so does the priorities of our, of our road and bridge matter now to all of us. And the recalls up. So all these, that's twenty-two days. I counted them up. Twenty-two days. Who knows when they're gonna file the lawsuit? They have ninety days, we've heard, and that could happen sooner than that. So I agree. We, we're, if we're gonna do what we're doing, let's do it right. And I would recommend postponing that, those decisions to later. I don't mind working on cleaning up descriptions to use later and that kind of thing. But let's be wise, not foolish is really where I'm at. And so we can discuss that and I'm interested to hear everybody's thoughts on what we are doing here. And, you know, we, I, I appreciate our, my constituency and the people I talk to and the voices I hear so that I can help make the right decisions with us together. That's my statement.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So our first item is the consideration of approval of the job description for county manager. And we all received that in your packet. And I will open that after discussion at this time and when we could go ahead and do, put a motion on the floor and move the discussion that way.
Well, I could put a broad motion. I would like to move that we postpone these discussions until after we've had an executive session for sure. And maybe postpone it indefinitely until we get together to decide on how we wanna handle the priorities I just mentioned.
And your reason for postponing until after the executive session?
Because that may impact what we, how we wanna do. Cause I still, I still believe what I've said. Okay, I think it's the right thing. And we've got Dan here now.
Maybe I'd like to continue to move forward with that if I could.
Say again.
So I have a motion to postpone action on the items on the agenda today. I don't have a second. Mention. That motion will die after the second. So we're still on consideration of approval of job description for county manager. So we can get in and look at this in depth, I would make a motion that we approve the job description we have before us. For county manager. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the job description that we had before us for county manager. That will bring it to discussion.
Yeah, I'm sure I have a couple of comments, questions, if my name.
We have it, sir.
And I would direct these to Commissioner Van and Mr. Wilson. Go well, put you into some conversation there.
Not a. I guess maybe we could close that door to the trucks.
Who's parked out there?
I can't.
I bet that water tanker here at the water station.
My question is, or comments are pertaining to responsibilities on, let's see if there's a page number. No, they're not. Count the page. I think it starts on page three. Yeah, page three. Dealing with departments and boards. At one time, Jim, when you talked about commissioners maintaining some impact on the boards that we appoint. Do we still wanna do that? The language in here, it goes a different direction. I think it might be.
Maybe no options for that.
Yeah. And I don't know that I have a big issue with the county manager supervising and or managing the boards. I think that's in the spirit of where we were going, but we hadn't talked about doing something different. So.
Go on, name those boards so everybody can hear them. Might, might be wise. Well, I can hear you're talking about the airport, attainable housing, recycles, noxious weeds, wet more community center, wet more library, tourism, fair board, planning commission, and the BDA. Right. So in Braden's briefing and Braden correct us, I thought you had excluded those also. But I'm not making a decision one way or the other. What, what was your rationale?
Yeah, so there, there was, at that point in time, we were talking about where this would actually end up. And I hadn't received any feedback from you all on that. I did reach out and talk to Carol Binder, who's a county commissioner and had a county manager and what she suggested, as well as Dennis Hunt from CTSI, who is a two-time county manager and now serves as a consultant there at CTSI. Their suggestion was that the manager oversee those boards mainly for the training aspect and making sure that when new members come on that they're trained not to form any sort of buffer between the commissioners attending a board or, or anything like that, but really just to for it to be on somebody that would have that longevity of experience of the county to be able to come in and help orientate a new board member or do some, some training, things like that.
Yeah, currently, Bill, could you identify the boards that you're involved with on that list?
Airport. Fair board. That's it.
Would you foresee moving forward, continue involvement, even if we have a county administrator?
I think we should. I, I believe we should.
Kevin, you, you're involved in some of these as well?
Yes, I'm on attainable housing and the wet milk community center and the wet more library that's on these and tourism.
Planning commission is independent, my views. And the BZA is also.
And for clarification, you're not on those boards within those meetings.
That's the case with all of them.
Yeah, we're, we've already passed a resolution that county commissioners will not serve on.
That's correct. And we are their point of contact to bring things forward or help them work through the system and things.
So.
But are you supervising and managing?
I don't think either one. I think I represent the commissioners at the boards that I go to. That's the way I look at it. And.
They're, they're, and that's how I do it. And they, they operate. They're in charge of their people, period. And, and they're appointed by us. And so that's how we, you know, in the, in the each year or depends on the bylaws. But as far as being the point of contact, we don't need somebody in between them and the commissioners in the end. We, we are the people that need to be bringing things to them that impact like budgets. It go work with this one. Just recently with the airport board, they got a, a crack seal thing and I was the rep to the state to work the grants with them to get it ready. So we get the money and then I have to administrate that as a commissioner to get them to pay and reimburse account. That has to continue. It's not for county manager. Anyway, that's, I think.
Yeah, as, as it says, supervise and or manage is different than what we're talking about here.
As a county manager, it's not gonna be managing the planning commission.
And how, and why do you say that, if I may ask? Why would?
Cause the chairman of the board manages the commission. That's his job and get it there. The secretary to the board is only that, and that's Dorothy Carston. And whoever, if you want the county manager to man, to manage Dorothy, that, that's something we haven't discussed yet. That's in the cards.
Do you think the county manager should, in that third bullet on page three supervisor managed, do you think that the county managers should supervise or manage any of those boards? No.
Just to be clear, the planning zoning commission and the BZA are both statutory creations. Whereas the others, I don't think.
That's right.
Noxious weed might be the.
Tourism and noxious weeds and airport.
Okay. Statute. But and a commission in particular is what in, and a commission of BZ have very clearly. That I'm not sure that a county manager can do in the middle. All of that doesn't prevent a county manager from providing technical assistance to those commissions as they need it.
And that was kind of your point a minute ago, if I'm not mistaken, that your role there would be to provide training for new members as to what their duties are.
The county manager's role, right?
Oh, no. I stand corrected. Sir, county manager's role would be to provide direction and training for new members coming on board.
And maybe there'd be a better word there.
Better be.
Or not correct. Like liaise, liaison, service liaison for the board. I'm not, oh, they sure might. But that was the, that was the spirit of it, yes.
How about inserting a bullet there then on boards serve as a BLCC liaison to the following boards? And then that leaves the question of I hope I know the answer to this, but who supervises slash manages those boards?
Let me have a shot at that. The chairman of the board knows what's going on. The chairman will educate the people that are nominated. The chairman has a board, the board themselves actually vet the applications on all the boards before they recommend it to a commissioner. All they're doing is recommending and approving from us. And if we see that there's some other reason as a board now, I'm not talking as the commissioner acting alone as the point of contact. If we know there's some other reason, like there's some dark secret we don't know about, or whatever it might be, then we can question that or veto it. We don't need a county manager being the liaison to anything. Or action. That's why I, I didn't, I thought. Or action. That's why I I didn't. I thought from his presentation that was understood and I'm. And I don't know where why these state, I I know why. These are what we agreed to on twenty or on whatever when we went through that um. Quick look that we did on the boards or on the job descriptions. Is that where you picked these up? Right?
During the workshop.
Yeah, way back and we never did tailor specifically. We we took each item and we said, well, what if, but we never looked at it in a hard way like we are right now. Go ahead, Dan. Dan, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, I don't want to inter uh interrupt you, but. What I might suggest is we take these out of that whole bullet point of supervise and or manage and just create a new bullet point. That soon says provide administrative support to the following boards.
Like we need our computer fixed. Get it with I T.
There'll be a fourth bullet. On page three.
Um, it'd be a fifth.
Well.
Six, really.
The next bullet in line dealing with boards is what I'm suggesting. Where a bullet would identify a bullet would provided, a bullet was supervised, then the next bullet could be served as. Whatever language you miss provided.
Yes.
On the boards. Which that bullet then takes out the boards out of that. Supervise and or manage.
Right.
Okay.
And but the next bullet still allows the county manager to oversee the budget for those.
Correct. That stayed in there, yes.
And I just shared this document with y'all so you could see that live.
Okay. So, yeah, that would make more sense than like that. And uh. But it brings up the question, what's wise with supervise and manage in you uh manage what? The land bill gonna manage the department of human services, O E M, the uh. The road and bridge, all that. Will step clear out of it. He's gonna ma- what does manage mean in that sense? Supervise, supervise. So they're gonna, he's gonna rate those people for us.
He or she, yes.
Yeah, well, whatever. I'm I I'm using a generic key. So you want me to say he or she every time I say?
Yeah, they either ways. Um, so it meant the supervise and or manage. I think that makes the spirit of what this document says was um, what we. I thought we had discussed that as well as the policy manual. That's um that I've proposed as well would be serving as as the manager, the supervisor. So that would be performing job evaluations, um, helping. With strategic planning, anything like that, the kind of the order of operations. It would be that the commissioners come up with the overall strategy for the county. And task the county manager with making that happen. And then the county manager then oversees those V O C C department heads. To make sure that those are carried out on the V O Cs behalf, on behalf of the V O C C. So if, for example, for road and bridge, hey, we need to be doing more, uh, we need to pay. You know, five percent more of the roads this year or something like that. That's the strategy that the V O C C decides. And then the county manager works with the road and bridge director to make sure that that happens somehow. Or brings forward issues that might keep that from happening and report back to the board. Hey, we don't quite have the budget for that. What are we gonna do about that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I would still. I'm having a problem with uh supervising and managing still, especially in Veterans Affairs, for example. All of it, actually, but it. That's the. Comfortable with supervise and manage. And that's what a county manager does. And that's what the majority of this board thinks. We will vote on it when we get a chance.
Yeah, I think. We all understand that these various departments have their, what we call department heads. They're gonna. They're gonna manage the day-to-day operations of their own departments.
That's right.
I I don't read into this that the county manager would start doing that, so.
That's what that bullet said. Manage and supervise, in other words, giving. Always uh performance reports and. Be the absence, that kind of stuff is is actually supervising and managing day-to-day operations of each of those departments.
I think it'd be department heads, not departments.
Says supervise departments.
Literally just changed.
Yes, magic changing as we speak.
The only the and the reason that I kind of took that approach was mainly for something like. Administration or building and grounds, which we don't really have a department head for building and grounds and so. But I would still recommend that the county manager would be overseeing the maintenance, any anybody that works for maintenance or custodial. Uh, different things like that that don't have a prime.
And that was that was my other comment to be in that we just decided we have a contract now doing maintenance. Building and and I think it ought to be one, they ought to be consumed in that as well, the buildings and ground, day-to-day stuff. Along with that contract and manage and operate. This turned out to be a very good. Thing. I'm getting a lot of good feedback on it. Initially, they said, Kanda, you take it. I did. Now, if I'm stepping back and you're gonna sit in the uh that's not you, the the county manager. Sits in that, then that's a decision on that. Be supervising that contract. Not supervising the contract, administering that contract, the program manager for that contract. To include the. Not, there's no contract with our, we have a direct, we're an employer, we're gonna figure out how to handle it. We go into that contract, day-to-day, is it part of it or is it separate deal? Benefits would be different. Something to think about.
When I read this, if my name is chair. When I read this county manager job description. I made the assumption that if we adopt this and eventually hire a county manager, the point of contact in this. Becomes. No employee, right? We don't, if we have a county manager, we don't need to be involved at the level we have been. That's.
It would have to be. I don't I don't think it's no, we got a resolution, we'd have to act.
Right. I'm just saying, I don't, I just don't think we.
You just say it would be necessary.
Of contacts, correct. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that has to be.
We haven't had that conversation. We haven't taken any action on.
Right. Nor have we had the conversation, how do we transition into this? Just don't cut and run like we did the other day. There's chaos. We have to say, well, certain meetings have to take place. That's why I was recommending. Tableing this until we can come up and then make the steps real. You know, just on the on the thirty-first, I think you have a conflict in there. There's one for the first and there's one for the thirty-first on voting. To approve a county manager after after we're looking at the.
Nothing on the thirty-first.
Now, there was. There was. So, I'm not sure where it is.
I'll look at that.
Anyway, that's that's all I'm thinking. We've got to do this deliberately. That's why I wanted to step back, not be foolish. I want to do it the right way. Not saying we can't do it. That's why I wanted to. Make sure we're prioritizing what we're doing, the bit here and that. Anyway, thank you.
Anything else on this document?
Did everybody see the changes again?
I did, the the Dan made and. That you made.
For the public, just so you hear that full sentence, supervise and or manage the heads of the following departments or. Where there is no department head supervision and or management of the department. So I think that captures the spirit of what we're talking about.
There is a, is there not a department head, a department head?
It's not, yeah, not so maintenance and and.
So we're gonna establish.
So we would not have a department.
Because there, okay, because that's a contract.
You know, sure.
Um, custodial falls under buildings and grounds in your mind?
Current, and that's where it's counted. Where should it be? I think that's.
Any comment from the room on this? And.
Well, once again. The assumption is you're gonna do a county manager without taking into consideration all the factors. It's just assumed here that you're gonna do this. I don't think you're taking into account the feedback you're getting from the public. Or even what this presentation will give you. And you have other things that you need to deal with. And this, and I don't know if that job description is what we saw online. You're giving, you're funneling re-elected officials' positions, their authority and responsibilities. Down to one person. And who does that person answer to?
To the board of commissioners.
But how would you know what to even judge how they're doing or anything? There's all the information that's going to that one person. And then they decide what goes to the commissioners. I think this is just needs to be tabled.
If I can respond to that, I think there's a couple of things. One, maybe to let everybody know about what the the current. Like schedule as far as what's on some of the meeting agendas moving forward. Um, so that way they understands what that looks like and I can read that here if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Um, so in pertaining to this. Meant to um. Only to this, there might be other items of business moving forward, but pertaining to to accounting manager. Um, today, we're we're talking about the job description, job posting. And then on the nineteenth, there's a workshop for the Custer County V O C C and county manager policy manual. Which addresses a lot of the concerns that the previous speaker brought up regarding what's. What five lanes, what what is the um, the responsibilities? At the end of the day, the county managers, or I'm sorry, the county commissioners are responsible for the county. They're delegating some of their authority to the county manager to make sure things happen. This document uh lays out exactly what that looks like, as well as has an agenda or a schedule. Of when the county manager would be reviewed based on those things. So there would be a very clear set of dates, very clear. A set of expectations for things to be proposed. And the county manager, and the way that's written currently, is the county manager's performance is truly based on the performance of the county. And so at at any one, at well, at any point in time being at will, the county manager can be. Can be terminated. Uh, but that would give at least quarterly a reason to to look at that county manager and say. If they're actually moving forward with things or not. Um, so that that's gonna be what is at least currently on the agenda for for the nineteenth Wednesday. Um, on the, on August first is is actually when the consideration of appointing a county manager is. And so uh making making sure there's time for any other presentations by the tiger team or otherwise. Or other options to be to be brought forward at any point in time before that meeting or even at that meeting before that item of business. So that's the current standard.
No, just a second. I have a question for you. You said there are dates. Here, there's no dates on anything. What document would that be?
The email that I that I.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the skinter. You said in the description or in one of the documents, it establishes quarterly review. Well, that's not in this.
The policy manual that's gonna be discussed on Wednesday. Yeah, and that's the same one that I I sent forward um during the executive session.
And they weren't redacted, they were highlighted. Those, you had that that manual policy. It was hard to read through the color, but it they were highlighted sentences that you added or subtracted.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Anthony Wheeler. So my question is, so all three of you. What's the purpose of government? Therefore, your primary priority. Mr. Flower, what's the purpose of government? Therefore, your priority.
Well, we're not really in a. Conversational point here. You have public.
Answer the question.
I think you're welcome to make a public comment to us if you'd like. I tried to get in the back and forth thing last time, really didn't work too good, so.
Okay. Your primary purpose is to protect, you know, God given inalienable rights and immediate people. That's your primary purpose. Therefore, it's your primary priority. Adding a county manager dilutes that because the people no longer have a say. And what happens to their county because one person is now managing it, they're not being recalled, if you're familiar with that term. And therefore, I object to the whole thing, plus the whole process you guys have used to go through this. As Mr. Kanda said, and I made last time, it's asinine. It's asinine. All the whole process is asinine. Now you're changing the document. We don't public review. So how are we gonna protect ourselves? Cause you're not doing it. You're not protecting us. That's what you're not doing. You're doing the exact opposite. That's why everybody was there the other day, the protest. That's really the core of the issue. You're not protecting us. You're doing the opposite.
Thank you, Anthony. Did you have your hand?
Um, Caitlin Murdoch, I have a question. First off, we don't have the job description. There was what was posted on the Custer County website. But that's obviously changed. But like Anthony said, we don't have a copy of what the job description is. But I'm curious as to what your positions are if you're delegating all of your responsibility to the county manager. That's my first question is how do I find out what you all will be doing as paid elected officials? My second question is what are the qualifications? You haven't mentioned the qualifications in anything. As to what this county manager should possess that you will be interviewing moving forward.
I'll speak to your first part of that question. Uh. As uh was mentioned a minute ago. On Wednesday, when we go through that policy manual, the V O C C and county manager policy manual. That will spell out. What the uh. Obligations of the county uh manager and also what the county commissioner's roles will be. And uh that is the document that we're going through uh in a workshop, followed by a meeting on Wednesday.
And the qualifications.
And qualifications are.
They're coming up. Right, right at this dot.
Yeah, they're in. They're in the documents that we're actually looking at now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we don't have access to that.
Kevin, would you like me to read those?
Go ahead, sir. Everybody knows what they are here.
And and so this is the the nothing substantially has changed in in the job description that was posted. Qualifications hasn't been touched at all, just so just so the public is aware of that. It's just mainly reformatting. Um, was what had to play to here and the addition of a salary range. And so uh and qualifications, just to reiterate. Are a bachelor's degree in public administration or an equivalent degree of the finance education required, master's degree preferred. For five or more years of increasing increasingly responsible public or private sector experience, the senior management experience. And experience in governmental accounting or any combination of education, training. And experience which provides the required knowledge, skills and abilities to perform the essential functions of the jobs, including specialized. Specialized duties contained within this job description. Bullet two would be possess a valid and current driver's license within ninety days of hiring date. And bullet three is county manager is required to reside within or relocate to Custer County within six months of start date.
And there are physical requirements as well.
Yes, and then there's there's physical requirements. Um, and that's the lift up to twenty pounds. Uh, push it up to twenty-five pounds. There's. Just mainly the the H R side, which I can read if anybody's interested.
Yeah, I've got a couple of hands online that I think I'll go to real quick. Let's see, Dave Adams.
Good morning, gentlemen, I noticed. On the Sentinel, on the front page, there's a poll quote from Bill. That says he. He feels threatened by the possibility of having a county manager, so I want to ask Bill. Why he feels that having a county manager would take away any power from any of the B O C C. When a county manager would actually free up the B O C C. To maybe actually work together on more important things than the day-to-day operations of the county. So Bill, why do you feel so threatened by the possibility of having a county manager? Handle the day-to-day operations of the county?
Why don't you read the quote exactly if you're gonna?
I'll get the Sentinel, so maybe Ann could tell you.
Hold on a second please. This goes back to the back and forth, if you would like to respond, I'll let you if not then respond.
The quote is what the quote is, it doesn't say anything about being threatened.
Yeah, well, okay, it doesn't say about being threatened, but it says that you're not going to have anyone take away your power. I don't understand.
It said.
Sorry, Kevin, I'll, I'll, I'll stop, but Kevin, I just. Want to also comment, I just want to comment that I know you are the liaison for tourism. And we are a well-functioning board, but just for the record, we have never seen you at a tourism board meeting. But we're functioning just fine, but I just want to state for the record. That particular. Piece of knowledge, have a good day.
Thank you. All right, now I see Michael Foster's hand as well.
Hey, thanks Commissioner, I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment and I appreciate y'all taking a look at the. The job description, I, I'm gonna go back to. I wanna highlight a comment that we talked about last week about, as, as we get into this county manager position. About span of control. And what we are asking this individual to potentially do, you know, span of control is influenced by a whole lot of things, organizational size, nature of the organization. Nature of the job, skills and competency of the person in question, the skills and competency of the people they manage, the type of interaction they have. The frequency, all those things, you know. Come to bear, so if you're the manager of a call center. You know, that handles insurance claim, you may be able to sit in a room and manage a hundred people. But for executive level functions where competency and frequency of interaction and familiarity. Are critically important, nineteen is not the answer. I'm not gonna, you know, there's no magic solution for the number is X. But it is not nineteen. If, if we continue to go down the path of creating a job position where we expect one person with competency and understanding. And experience. To be able to manage or supervise nineteen people or different entities, we are setting that individual up for failure. So I would just, I would just say if we're gonna go down that road and continue with that many. People to supervise in the span of control, I would just say proceed with caution. And just realize what we're getting into, I, I'm not trying to, this is not about. The manager's position in creating it, this is about trying to get that duty description correct, if this is the road we're going down. And what we are asking that person to do, thanks for the, uh, uh, opportunity to make a comment.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate it. And the only hand up is still Michael's there.
Sure, I might just, just address the, the number, because nineteen is brought up as the number of super people to supervise. And currently the way we've restructured this in the way that, that reads. Is that there'd be supervision and or management over eleven different departments. And, and I think, cause I think that's a great point, span of control is, you know, we'd like that to be around seven. I think, given the county and our size and, and really the, the folks that work here. That there doesn't need to be as much oversight over each of those individuals, but just. Really being there as support as well. There's a couple of those positions such as C S U extension, which is really a C S U employee. We're gonna, they're gonna have some more there, so it's gonna be more of a collaborative type of situation. Veteran service officers very similar there. A- as well as Department of Human Services, so that gets us into that eight or nine range. For actually supervising individuals. And then the administrative support to the boards would be just that administrative support. So. I think that's, that's a great point and I appreciate. Mr. Foster bringing that up.
I appreciate it, if you're still online too, I appreciate. You're. Seeing our. Lack of our salary range on that previous posting too and bringing that to us, thank you, sir. Anything else from online?
There's a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor. Bob, do you, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I just. Point of clarification, this. I know we have a number of elected officials. And they hire and fire and. And work for their people on a daily basis. And I think that the amount of people that are working for the county. Are under the supervision of those elected officials. And I personally don't see why we need another position. To cover that, I think that the county commissioners, well, first of all, I think they're all doing a good job. I think what we have to do is. Keep our nose out of their business. If there's an issue, I think it should come in front of the board. And each and every one of them has that opportunity to do that. And they have in the past and they will in the future. So. I personally feel as though most people are doing a great job, we don't need another. Layer of bureaucracy. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
And the county manager position, I'll just speak to that for a second, does not. Exercise authority over other elected officials. And because that is their department.
And you keep the, the orange hills as well, they're doing a good job. They're, they're doing a good part, those elected officials, like, they've got a good job.
Yes. So we would not, so this. Position would not exercise any authority over them. At all, because they are. I'll look over there because we have one in the room. So Kelly is, is responsible for her department. It's hers. And so. The only. The only thing. That. The board, even, even at this point, the board. And with the county manager in the mix. By default, then the county manager in preparing the budget, that, that is the only. Thing that we exercise any control over in any of the elected officials departments would be the budget.
Thank you. Okay.
Anything else from the room here? Anything from online? I'm not seeing any. Okay, so I do have a motion on the floor. To approve. The job description. As we now have before us.
Need to make a quick. Make sure that the motion's correct. Cause this job description also has a salary range on it, I know we're gonna discuss that, so we gotta make sure approving. The description, not the sound.
I think that's a placeholder at this point in that job description, the salary range. On that, so because that is a separate item on the agenda, so. Excluding, I would say excluding the salary range until that is addressed.
But including the changes that were made during.
Yes, so approving the county manager position as. Modified here today a- and excluding. You saw the salary range that's on there. So. Are we clear on that? Okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye?
And I will, I am opposed for the same reasons, I don't think we spent enough time defining this clearly enough, so I vote no.
Thank you. That motion carries by a two to one vote. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of pay rate, pay range for county manager. Well, I would move that we set the salary range for this position. From seventy-five to a hundred thousand. I would second that. And that would move us to discussion. I believe. The lower end of that is what we actually had put in the budget for this year. Was the seventy-five thousand. And. Then the upper range on that, I believe is. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah.
See your hand go up.
Part of, part of the reason that the salary range, like you said, budget is kind of a low end of that range. It's not kind of, it is the low end of that range, that's what we've added to the issue of the seventy-five thousand per county manager. The higher end of that range, reason being would be some studies from C T S I. Who captures what all the counties are doing. In Colorado and what the averages are as far as that goes, the average for a county that's our size is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. An average across the board. For counties in Colorado is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And given Custer County, this actually sets them, I, what. Personally, I would like to see is a salary study showing what county employees are making and then. What that is in comparison to the salary survey for other counties in Colorado. And then establishing some sort of percentage as far as like, do we want to be at average? Do we want to be twenty percent less of average, you know, what, what makes sense there? This puts us somewhere around twenty-five percent less than average, which when I kind of. Take a, a sample of other county employees is less than any other employee as far as the percentage shows. In less than average. I, I think there have been comments about. It being a first-time thing for Custer County. And, and then just where we're at as Custer County as well, and so that's where the hundred thousand. Came as, as the top end of that range. And, and I might make one more comment there as well. That's the, this does not add. Only this amount. So there, there would be more cost to the county than this, once you figure in fringe benefits, that looks something like. One hundred and twenty-five thousand to a one hundred and fifty thousand, depending on insurance that's taken out. And. But this doesn't take into account the fact that there will be a position that goes away when the county manager is, is created. And so I guess that's, that's one thing that hasn't really been talked about as far as like. Trying to take into account the public perception of what the extra cost is. And the very real cost that actually comes with that, if we were to create a full-time employee. This would be replacing a full-time employee, so with, if a, when a, if a county manager is hired. Then the director of finance and H R position would go away. And, and I will, will say on the record now that, that I will resign from that position. That way, that doesn't cost the county money, because it doesn't make sense for my position to exist. If the county manager position is created and filled. And so, the budget responsibilities, everything like that. Now, policy writing that I'm currently doing would go to the county manager, the H R would go to the. A new director of finance and H R position. Which would be accounts payable. Payroll and H R would be the main duties of that position. And. And so that we would, we would remove an entire full-time employee to make place for this full-time employee. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that this isn't a. One hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty thousand dollar bump, it's something like a thirty thousand dollar bump.
Thank you for addressing that and. I'm glad you hit that last number, I was, I was thinking it was in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I have a question for Grayden, if I may, I'm, I'm in the budget right now. Did we create a? Line item for that? The county manager position when we budgeted that seventy-five thousand, or did it go into the general fund? That expenditures.
It's captured under B O C C salaries right now in the budget. Which includes the, the commissioners, the admin system, that was the addition, was the county manager.
Thank you.
I would like to hear more, I, I haven't heard Tom explain why the salary range is correct. Why did you pick that?
Well, I think this position certainly has the responsibilities. And the authority that's incumbent upon a significant salary compared to a lot of other. Positions in our county, although certainly. It may or may not top the end of the salary scale, it doesn't really matter to me if it does or doesn't, I just think. That the job description merits that salary range. I think anything less than. Seventy-five thousand is. Certainly not going to be competitive over the long haul.
That's a great question, thank you.
Yeah, all right, I have a couple of comments then, then you're gonna talk open the left and we're done. All right, I, I disagree and I think it's too little. Like a hundred thousand dollars tops, hundred and twenty-five, or to get Mister right, it's not enough. And we're gonna end up with somebody that's inexperienced and they're probably, I don't know, we'll have to see, and we, we had no way of knowing that, you said. Other counties. I would like to know what sat, what surveys they did, how did they base their salary range on and what, what it was. I'll go back to what I said before, we're rushing into it. I, we need data to decide what this salary range really should be. I'll tell you what Vince and Scott Camper are making right now, they're, they're less than fifty, sixty thousand bucks each, forty thousand for Scott or whatever it is.
Well, what is it now, you said you knew, so what are their?
I'll pull them up if you want, I got it, sure, but I'm not gonna, I, I'm not, I don't care, that doesn't matter, the point is, it's below the seventy-five thousand dollars. By absolutely. And it's the most critical position we have, and so I would like to see in the near term that. Understood in order so we can keep good people that are doing the most critical jobs. The county manager is not a critical job right now, it is not, where are we failing? We're not failing anywhere, we have problems with how, how the structure is and how we're getting through things and, and Matt, and I think Bob brought up managing. Commissioners and staying in their lanes, et cetera, whatever it is. If we're gonna do it, do it right, and that's why I still would like to see this postponed so we can get the data to make a real decision. If we're serious about it, let's prove it. And get the guy in here, and if he really is gonna say that, I wanna see the numbers, I know you're saying you'll resign that position. But you're doing it now. And have you failed? And, and some of the reasons that you pointed out was your time split between somebody else. Why didn't that department head, why didn't you tell them to go talk to their department head or the P, the commissioner? Those kinds of things we need to understand before we start deciding whether we gotta fix something. And we're fixing it before we, we understand, so. That's my whole hangup, I, I'm all for, I, I've talked at length with county commissioners and managers at other counties as well as Caravah Hanger here. Who's a big advocate because she was in that realm and understood the value of it, if it's that complicated. But I haven't seen that yet. So I'm, and I'm happy to help make this better and stronger, and so if we're gonna do the right thing. We can post it, the, the next question that we're gonna answer is for how long, and so we'll have the same discussion, so. I don't think it's the right salary range.
What do you think salary range should be then?
If you're gonna get somebody that is interested in coming to Westland and living, you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars, probably a hundred and fifty. Hundred and twenty if the, if the span, if it's gonna take on the responsibilities that you're saying they are. And then we're gonna need to look hard at what we're paying the, uh, people that are underpaid today. And it's, it's, it's a balancing act. We got, that's the transition I'm talking about.
So your recommendation for a salary scale for this would be?
Shoot, it should start at ninety thousand at mo, at best. Um, and go up, but we can debate that. I'm not, I, I don't know. I don't have enough data to even say that actually, but I'm, I'm not there. Anyway, thank you.
All right. I think I would just speak for a quick second on that. Uh, I don't believe, I'll catch you here in a minute. I'll catch you in a minute. Sorry about that. You're needing me to speak up, right? Okay. You referenced. That HR finance was failing. And you asked where he failed. Well, uh, came out that way.
No, I didn't say it was at all. But I think, I think he doing a great job. Where did we fail? We didn't.
Okay. Well, you referenced him when you said that. That's why I referenced that now. And I don't believe that is where the, the failure lies.
I didn't.
Uh, and so.
I didn't say.
Okay. Well, that's, that's why I'm bringing it up to make sure we are, we all hear the same thing.
Okay.
Because otherwise it's easy to go off on a tangent. So, uh.
That's good.
Uh, if that was not the case, I apologize for that, sir. And, uh, so. And that's, the rest of my comments are off point to the. Uh, discussion at hand, so I will not bring them on up. Uh, anything else here at the table?
Yeah, if I may, uh. And I agree. I don't think Bill said. HR was failing and said if they're failing, where or why?
My apologies.
Yeah. I, I didn't, I didn't take it that way. I didn't hear that. So.
Well, thank you for that.
Quick comment. I would like to see if there's gonna be any, uh, money expended here. I'd rather see it in the form of taking care of the people that work in the courthouse. Giving them a raise and to take care of the roads. As opposed to going this big step. You gotta take care of the hometown too.
Thank you.
Anthony Wheeler. I've been building stuff my whole life. What you guys have done, I want to clarify about Aslan. What you guys have done is you created a position when all you had was a title. And now you're trying to create a position. If I was a contractor and I came out and said, yeah, I wanna, you want a roof, had it on your house. And I just started tearing off the. The side of the house that you want the room on, but I have no plans. I'd be fired. And you should be fired too.
Anyone else?
Um, speaking to the employee salaries currently, um, and what this person would be overseeing, that I think is pertinent to this conversation. Is the, the highest salary that this person would be overseeing is in the neighborhood of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, so that, that would be somebody that the county manager would be overseeing. And in those right, that, that goes down to something like fifty-five thousand dollars for the low end, uh, for supervisors. And, um, and just wanna address maybe real quick, um, the, the idea that's, um. The, the issues that, that are at hand and, and I unfortunately, I, I don't think that. Either I'm, I'm not, I've not been clear on that or, or it's not being heard, but really this, this all started back in that executive session. As this is what's going on in my departments. Um, that's not the first executive session that I've had that I've brought up issues with. Finance and HR and how those are to be addressed. And it's not, and there were other executive sessions where I brought up. Issues with department heads and, um, unfortunately, there were, there have been times where. Uh, commissioner would go outside of that executive session and try to handle that when it was supposed to be handled within. Executive session or bring that person in later on, which even caused more issues within my department. So. At the crux of why I presented this and why I think this is the, the good idea. And I know that hasn't been captured. Um, certainly in, in the papers article, um, but really that was, it's the Sentinels article. Um. Really, the only reason that I came forward is because there are issues that I am facing that are no, are not being addressed. And so where, where am I failing as a department or where is my department being failed? It, it would be coming to the commissioners and asking for, uh, issues to be fixed. Um. I was promised solutions to that back in November and January and I lost hope is what it came down to. And so once again, I was trying to come up with different things that could help things because we talk about putting the employees first. Um, you know, with, with all due respect, nobody in this room knows that as well as I do. Within the HR capacity. And so to say that we're not trying to do that, to say that I'm not trying to do that in my HR capacity. At the very beginning of this, when we had a workshop to go over the job description. The time set aside to actually go through the job description, not that we were gonna have a county manager, but just to entertain what that would look like. We didn't take the opportunity to actually do it. And so here we are, yes, putting the roof on the, on the house that doesn't have a roof on it. Um, but a certain amount of work has been done beforehand. And then some other things came up rightly so that we needed to make some changes to make that better. Um, I think this is the best thing for the county because of that management ax, aspect. And, um, and I would agree with Bill. I think, you know, to get more towards, towards an average. Uh, what the, the CTSI salary is, which I gave that data back in January. I'll give the new data, um, back for. For this year that's new as of, uh, a couple of weeks ago. That way there's, there's an opportunity to see that. But that's the numbers. Um, and so. At the end of the day, this, this is somebody that's gonna be managing and going to be helping. Keep those issues that are happening at the department head level and below from happening. Or they're going to address those things when they do happen. And so instead of taking it to the board. Where just candidly, it's, it's not always been addressed at all or quickly. This person would be able to do that. And that's really the standpoint that I come from. And I know that I've been vilified in this situation and, and I. Just wish that people would actually talk to me and, and try to understand me and my heart in this as opposed to drawing conclusions. Um. Because anybody that, that does know me knows that this isn't, this isn't just a money grab or, or anything like this. This is really. Trying to do what I believe is best and being here day after day with my hands tied behind my back. Not being able to serve our employees, which is my job. And so that's why I bring that forward and, um, and why I think this position is absolutely necessary. And, and the salary, I think, um. I think the, at least the data has been out there as, as clear as any numbers have ever been brought up here. Um, so I just, that, that's where I'm at with that.
Yes.
So, just to clarify, if you're not going to be doing, bringing, uh, HR and finance. You, but you're going to be doing it as county manager. The workload is gonna be higher with everything else added on there. This isn't being logical. From what I hear and see, HR in itself is a huge, and we keep adding on assistants. And other people in the job market for the county and HR is a big job. It's huge. And it's gonna get bigger. So I, I go back to what everybody has said back here is that. The sequence of now, the analysis of this was to jump in and say, we're going to do this. And then backpedal and make it work. You need to analyze it and come up to where you need to be. That's just my opinion. And Barbara, sorry.
Do you like to speak to that?
I might just address the HR. There, there's a, the big difference between human resources and managerial. Uh, responsibilities of a position for county manager. And, and that would be somebody that would be legal and is making sure that everybody's following the policy manual. The director of finance and HR, if, if this were to take place, the director of finance and HR would have the sole responsibility for human resources. The county manager have the responsibility for managing all these, these department heads and departments where there's not a department head. And so that causes this checks and balances where if the county manager isn't doing their job. Then somebody can go to the HR director and then bring that up to the V O C C. And so that, that would be the, the responsibility that I would be transferring from this current way my job is set up. And so that would pre- at time for the management side of things. And meanwhile. Um, at, at least the way it's currently, the assistant director of finance and HR. Would be more, that doc, job description would be more like what the new job description would be, except for the addition of. Of human resources responsibilities. Does that make sense?
You, you're reestablishing your current position in another place. So you're given the new eight finance person HR.
Right. Yes. So, so, so what it's, what it would be doing is. So for my position, for example, it would be taking away the budget. It'd be taking away any sort of strategy whatsoever, any policymaking, anything like that. That would go away from my current position into the county manager's position. And that would be the, what, what is left would be the job description here. For the director of finance and HR position, getting a feel from the topic of pay range.
Yes, we have, sorry. Okay. Any other comment on this item of business on the pay range?
Kaylin Murdock, I, well, I wanted Brandon, Braden to hear this. I don't think that anyone.
Speak up loud.
I don't think that anyone is vilifying Brady. I think he has a lot of valid information. But it comes back to tabling this whole discussion until all of the information is out there and in a document or in a presentation. That talks about the salary ranges, the job description. Brayden, I just said, no one is vilifying you that I've heard. I think people just want all of the information. Before a decision is made. The tiger team presentation, the. Information that Brayden presents as far as salary ranges and job descriptions and the budget and all of these things need to be in one document. And all of this is haphazard right now.
Okay.
Instead of.
So.
Looking at it.
I'm glad you brought up the salary range because that's the topic we're on and, and that's what you need to be commenting on right now.
Well, I felt that he was not commenting on that.
Yeah, and that's why we, we went ahead and moved forward. Thank you, Dan, for that. So.
Sure. I think you're doing your great job.
Anything else on the, on the topic that we're on, on the pay range? Go ahead.
Judy Alkington, I think I've heard. That there needs to be a study on the salary ranges and what all the other towns and stuff are doing. So I'm unclear how you can vote on that when you don't have that information.
Um, he does have that information in hand and that's a, a document from CTSI. On a salary survey that they have done with the, uh, counties across Colorado.
But I've heard you all say, well, what about seventy-five thousand? Well, what if we do one point? Anybody in favor of? You, you're throwing numbers around like you don't know what they're doing.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Sir.
Bill, you made the comment of the difference, um, range for salary.
Uh, that is a possibility, yes. And are you suggesting that?
I'm suggesting that it should be and I, and I also stated for the same reasons. We do not understand enough to make it a logical one for our needs still. And that's the point I was gonna make. It comes time to vote. I'll vote no for that reason.
Do you have an alternative to put?
No, I said, I, you know, it's, I told you it should be more if we're really serious about it. And in order to attract the right guy, and we have not tailored it to what Braden even said here. When, when you read the job description, it says. In charge of budgets and, and, and in charge of, it, it's not clear what that means at all. You just described it differently. Uh, you know, uh, you're gonna take over some of that. The county manager's gonna do some HR stuff too. What does that mean? Or not, okay? So if it's no, it, you see what I'm saying? So it, does it demand more salary or not? And if it doesn't. I, I wanna make sure we get the right guy in here. And so I still think that. I've surveyed the counties too. You can take an average of them all, but they're not the same as Custer County and the situation that we currently have. And the money that we have with the, at, with the population we have. And we still have critical needs, like I've mentioned, on the roads. They're the most critical and the, and the safety of this county, period. And so I wanna balance that against, do, do we take some money out of those services? To keep people here, like you were pointing out, the, I'm not so sure Kelly's paid enough either, or, or, or her people. In order to keep people here and raise families here and, and have county, the county thrive on the strategic vision that we have as a county that we all agree to, by the way. Uh, that we need to work with. So stepping back and making sure that I don't understand the rush either. If it's right, I'm all for it. Uh, if it's right. I'm not, uh, I'm not hung up on women are losing an argument. I'm hung up on doing the right thing. And I'll make that statement again. I'm not about to give up my responsibilities. There's two, two things. We have authorities and responsibilities as commissioner that you give us. To take, take care. We cannot give our responsibilities away. We can give our authorities away, but we're still accountable for them. The dumb decisions that people make are the foolish ones. Uh, that we have to do. So, uh, and I think we have the talent to manage the way we're set up. That's why I wanted. At some point, we should look at both sides, but I'm not advocating doing the tiger team briefing. If the decision's been made without it, it's gonna be that way until we get to that point where we appoint that guy. And if we haven't got enough data in the meantime and the right guy applying, then we flat better look at a way of handling it. Anyway.
So you know, introducing an amendment to the salary range.
Short answer probably would be no, Ben.
Just a quick question, cause I'm hearing conflicting, um, strategies of moving forward to actually answering this question. Um, one is that here we need to have surveys and we need to know what the data is. And then the other side of that is that we're Custer County and that you've got a, that that's different, so it doesn't really matter. So I just wanna know, how do we make sure that we move forward?
And say we're definitely, we're, we're, each county's unique, but taking an average across rural counties doesn't do it. And if that's all we've got, I don't, I haven't seen anything else but that. And if the average says a hundred and fifty thousand, I'm not so sure that's right. But it sounds like it's closer to, if you really want a, a guy to come in here, it sounds closer than a, than a hundred, than ninety.
Might as send out that salary survey so they were gonna play this one. You should have the other one coming forward.
Thank you.
And, and just one quick comment, Braden. Salaries don't make, make you, you have to understand that. And I can't remember the name of the county that has an administrator, but that person isn't an administrator. That person was also answering the phones for the V O C C and was also the finance person. And, and, and so the salary for calling the county administrator is, is bogus, cause that's not what it was. That's why I said we have to really understand the data, what it means before and apply it to the same situation we have here. We're gonna have a county admin. You know, the other counties call them an administrator and that person's setting up calendars for the, uh, commissioners and booking hotels. It's not a county administrator doing HR too or finding.
I haven't seen anything online. So we have a motion on the floor for approving a pay range. So we have a motion on the floor for approving a pay range for the position of county manager at a range of seventy five to one hundred thousand dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay for the reasons I said.
That motion carries by a two to one vote. Next item up on our agenda is the consideration of posting the position of county manager. I would move that we uh, post today with the uh, job description approved and these salary range approved. Uh, post that job today for the five days on our county website. Uh, to close on the twenty fifth. So I have a motion on the floor to post the position of county manager on the county website. And for five days, that job posting closing on the twenty fifth.
Five business days.
That is five business days. Discussion.
Got a quick question. Uh, it's been posted. Have we had anybody applying?
I do not know.
I've had two.
To apply. How many days was it posted?
I think it was posted for five days then.
Okay, so my question is, why not longer? We've gotten two only. Like, we we haven't seen whether they qualify or not.
Well, we agreed to five days.
Yeah, but it can be amended. I mean, he's just he made a motion that he said, if the policy says a minimum five day can be longer than if we decide to do it.
They could actually said, uh, it is normally posted for five days on the county website. It didn't say minimum. It doesn't say uh, maximum. It says it is normally posted for five days.
We posted others longer.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, because we decided necessarily.
That is correct.
So I'm asking why is make that decision now if we're gonna make a motion? So you wanna do it without it, that's the drive.
I would like to do it for five days. That's why five days.
Question.
You may.
Uh, to our attorney. Are you of the opinion that we are doing what we should according to any statutes, guidelines, requirements?
Yeah.
We're not gonna hear a bunch of
In terms of the motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
I believe that would comply with any statute or other prison policies that I'm aware of.
And you noted to just our website.
That is correct.
I recommend going beyond that if you really want a county manager. Our website doesn't touch many people. Only ones that have a computer. Five days from now won't make any difference.
That is why it's on the website because it
Limits it.
Because it doesn't make them, it doesn't have time to make the newspapers.
Want to be logical about it. And you want to get it down, given this widely distributed information.
Wondered if it would make sense also to post it, at least within various C C I and um, state, yeah, state organizations.
That would be prudent. I would be willing to put that out there.
And we could get it into the papers today for posting this. If we approve.
If we can make the papers, that would be fine.
Do we need to restate or do we need to amend to that effect?
I would amend my motion to uh, include not only the county website, but uh, the C C I website, uh, the newspapers. And uh, I'm not aware of what the other online might be. So I would say we'd be built with the C C I. That would be my amendment.
And the papers do.
Okay, uh, that would be the uh, the Sentinel and the Tribune.
Right. My my home is if possible, I mean, for some reason you don't hit a deadline and so wait until eleven A M. Smart head on month.
Yeah.
Someone's suggesting posting was
Yes.
Be done because.
So my amendment is to include the newspapers if it is possible to make the deadline today uh, for posting as well as C C I in our website.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have an amendment on the floor to include the newspapers if we can make the posting deadline as well as C C I along with our website. Those in favor of that? If I was saying aye.
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 Discussion we didn't
Okay. Discussion on that motion then.
Well, let's do it here first.
Is there a discussion on a amendment?
Yes, okay.
The discussion here at the table.
Okay, so I I agree we need to make it broader and C C I is one avenue. I think what Dan said, there are other agencies. There's the state agencies like C T S I, C C. Uh, there's a road bridge website as well, uh, not a road bridge, but they
Public Works.
Public Works and then there's Pub, whatever Brayden would you bring up on county managers. There's a club of those around too. County man that ought to hit their website there. That's what they eat and drink.
And I would be amicable to that. Any others that are suitable?
We task Brayden with this posting.
I'm gonna look at you to see.
That has no.
Uh, we would task him with doing that posting, yeah.
I'll make sure the board is copied on that.
Okay, clue down on that as well, please.
And I'll copy the county attorney's.
Yeah, that would be another place. Because we have attorneys for it all. Different pieces.
All right, anything else here?
I'm done here.
Okay, Bob.
My personal opinion is five days is not enough. There's a lot of people that uh, do get the newspapers. But they're mailed out. It probably takes another three or five days or longer for them to get the newspapers. And this information, I think five days is 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 not appropriate. I think if we take something of this magnitude, we should give at least a thirty day window out there. To let people know that it's there. How are, you know, you're eliminating a lot of people that do have, may have the uh, expertise and they have the knowledge, they may be already in this community or wanting to move to this community. And uh, I I think we're just pushing this along, right? Like I stated, I first came to the chair. Is we gotta, we gotta slow this thing down. You gotta have a more party. You gotta put this stuff out there for the people. That's what you're representing. And I think the board should consider at least a minimum thirty days.
Thank you.
Anthony, we'll be able to further his point. This is also vacation season. A lot of people on vacation now having a good time and certainly not looking at websites, so. We'd be prudent to do as he suggested.
Thank you, sir. Anything else in the room? Michael.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner. Just to go back and highlight what the state says about that, if you'll look at the that Colorado, uh, it wasn't a revised statute. It was the Colorado Code of Regulations I forwarded to y'all last week. The state says you're required to make reasonable efforts, and that is certainly open to interpretation. The law stipulates it must be for a minimum of twenty four hours. But then the state goes on to articulate, uh, hey, even for an internal promotion a job that is just being posted for internal to a company, two weeks or fourteen days would be considered a very conservative posting estimate. That's just something to consider as y'all are making your uh, making your decision. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, so I have a motion to amend the uh, original motion by including the the two newspapers as well as C C I. And
You can say others.
The other websites as uh, prudent for this position. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay for the reason of good, good dissemination, not time enough. What was that?
So that motion carries by a two to one vote. That will take us to a back to the original motion. Which is consideration of posting the position of county manager uh, with the amendment of the posting places. Any further discussion on that?
No, sir.
Anything from here? And Michael, you still need wanting to make a comment or do you just leave your hand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I'm not good at managing this. I'm I'm done with that. Thanks. I'll I'll figure it out sooner or later.
I fully emphasize with that. Okay, so we're not seeing anything online now. Go back to the room.
So is this the point where you could adjust or where to adjust the length of the posting time?
Would adjust what?
The length of the posting time.
Yes.
Uh, it would have been uh, on a amendment, yes.
Still, man.
It has not been voted on yet, so that is still a possibility, yes, sir.
So I would move to amend it for a longer period of time. Thirty days.
Yeah.
Or I'll even go down to twenty five days if you think that's valuable.
Let me know what your motion is.
Something different. Twenty five.
I have a motion on the floor to amend the existing motion to uh, post this position for twenty five days. Do I have a second?
You explain the rush.
Hearing none, that motion will die. Those in favor then of posting the position of county manager for five days including the newspapers, C C I and other websites as prudent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries by two to one vote. Any other additional items of business?
None for me.
That will take us to public comment. Do we have anything from the room?
Questions? I did, Judy Alkington, I just have a question. Why are you in such a rush in five days? What is your reason for it?
We have waited for quite a while to see the alternative presentation that was to come to us. That was supposed to be here a bit four months ago and it never did happen. Uh, I believe that it is being postponed until after the election. Uh, I do not know this, but I believe it is being postponed for that reason. Uh, possibly because the board will be of a different makeup. I honestly and firmly believe with all my heart, this is the way we need to go. And due to that, I am looking to put this in place before that happens. And that is my reason for doing this. And uh, is that a good reason? It might be, it might not be. But it is uh, what I believe needs to happen, and I will state that here. We have issues that need to be dealt with while we have been waiting. These are ongoing issues. And they're not getting better. This will address some of these issues. And that is exactly why I am trying to put this in place. Anyone else?
That's something Mr. Flowers coming in. I think she was asking, he said it.
She pointed at me, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was asking.
Okay.
There's both of you voted for five days.
Yes. Would you like?
Uh, I will respond. I believed all along that county administrator uh, is what is needed in this county. You could experience yourself if you're finger off, you know the value of them. Um, I appreciate that the citizens, including most of you folks, concerned about you not knowing all the stuff that we know. And you don't. You're not privy to that. The only way you would be that is to be an elected official and sit in executive sessions uh, to be at the courthouse, uh, deal with the issues as they arise or unfortunately not dealing with them necessarily. Um, in my opinion, the the three people that are qualified to make this decision are sitting at this table. It's our responsibility to listen to the input of anybody that wants to get it. I clearly believe that. But the honest falls right here. Um, I haven't listened to everything that's been said. It doesn't change my belief that a county administrator, in my opinion, is what is best for this county in this realm.
Thank you for the question, too.
Okay, so now.
Anthony, we have the county administrator or county manager. Which one is it? Or is Tom Flower the steep again?
They're one and the same, sir. It's a matter of semantics which we've dealt with.
It's not words.
I'm sorry, I think I was speaking.
Words matter.
Which we have dealt with for four or five weeks on what we're gonna call a position. We all agree county administrator, county manager, exactly the same thing. There is an association, Colorado Association of County Administrators. There is not an association of county manager. It's a matter of semantics. I'm not interested in arguing those.
We are posting it as a county manager.
The resolution. Well, then you should call that. Your responsibility to accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm done with public comment.
I'm not sure. I think I've seen.
Okay, it's okay.
By all means, sir, I'm on public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess I have to make this comment. I know, um, this is the third meeting that I personally have been at. And the room of the electorate were sitting out here and we have made comments, all three. And it has been the majority of the people. All three, and it has been the majority of the people are saying no. For some reason, which I don't understand why we're not listening to the people. In fact, after the last, last meeting, Commissioner Tom Flower turned around and says, I just heard nothing but a bunch of lies coming out of there. So if that's the feeling of Commissioner Tom Flower, so be it.
It was quote, yah yah. Bunch of yah yah.
I think Bob has the floor, sir.
Okay, so that's going to be the facts.
Okay, I'll respond to that briefly. Yes, the room has been the majority negative comments against this. That being said, a lot of the other comments and communications do not necessarily reflect that. There is more than 25 people that we represent. This is the 25 people that are here at the meeting. But that doesn't mean that that is the entire feeling of the entire county. I realize it is, it is the feeling of the, of the majority of the people in this room. And that is an answer to your question. Because that isn't necessarily the the sentiments of the entire county. Go ahead, sir.
Maybe that's the reason they should go to an election. And let all of people yay or nay, just like you're going to do on a recall.
I will say that I have a database of customer county conservatives of over 500 people. And they are not in favor of this. The biggest complaint is that these meetings are hold during the day, and most of these people have jobs during the day, so they can't go here, so they ask some of us to represent their opinions. I also can forward a lot of these emails. I know some of them I have been copied on that have gone to you, Mr. Day in particular. So to say that it's just 25 people is inaccurate.
No, well, I was referring directly to his statement.
Okay.
But there are, there are other communications that come into us.
Brayden, just, you know, with this this proposed timeline that's been laid out, that does give time for the, what was previously, at least talked about, Tiger Team presentation, and I just would hope that the Tiger Team would still get that presentation between now and August 1st, because there's still time to hear some good input as to other options to fix, to fix maybe the issues that are, that were experienced in here at the county. So in the spirit, in the spirit of getting as much information as possible, that's certainly my request to, to the Tiger Team.
Thank you.
I agree with this statement.
I agree with this statement too, but I would also ask that if you do a special meeting, hold it at night for those that want to attend.
Anything else from the room?
I agree that it needs to be put off a little bit, a matter of this magnitude should not be rushed, and that seems like what we're doing. There's people here that don't see why we can't wait till we hear the Tiger Team presentation, have all the facts, and then decide if this is truly the best way for the county to go. And it doesn't seem like you're much interested in doing that up there. It's kind of disappointing to me.
Thank you.
You done?
It looks like I'm not seeing, oh.
Okay, I had to make.
You have one hand that just came up.
Oh, you got a hand, go ahead.
Finish with the public, and then we're back to you, sir. Uh, Jordan, you got in just under the wire.
Thanks. Yeah, I just, I can't remember what the county budget is off the top of my head, but it seems like a lot of verbiage is being spilled over $50,000 or $100,000 when the county budget is eight 10 million or something like that. A lot of this is not irreversible, and so uh, one reason that I don't think the majority of the people in the county are weighing in on it is because it's not something that's going to cause bankruptcy or is not irreversible. So just from my perspective as a publisher uh, that reaches, you know, 2,000 readers or something. We haven't heard much on this, even though we've been reporting on it since last November, and actually two and a half years before that. So there you go. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing anything else online. You, sir?
Yeah, I gotta correct the record here, Kevin. There was no attempt by me, I looked at this exactly for what it was, the approval of a job description, a pay range, and post accounting manager. It wasn't ever there to slow roll and get past a recall, period. Then, and every comment I made was in, it was in earnest to do the right thing, to get the right guy at the right time. And that's the first point. Secondly, it is our responsibility, and it's foolish, I'm gonna use the word foolish. I could say asinine, but I'm gonna use foolish. It's foolish to rush, I believe. It's foolish not to post things correctly and all things. And so what we did as a Tiger Team, we took a look, I'm thrown in, we have a county manager before us, we voted to do it, and then we voted to correct it. So I'm in. We're not going to give a presentation for an option. That's foolish to think that we're going to go up to the end, get five people or 500 people applying, and then have a presentation to think that's going to do anything? It's not. We, that's why we want to do this methodically and do that presentation at the right time. I don't care if we organize and we've got the, we fixed the job description, even if it was perfect. Then we need to decide how we posted. And then we need to decide if we've got all the data in front of us. You don't have the, we have it, we have a structure that's called the resolution, whatever it was, to manage the thing. And what we, as a Tiger Team, the Tiger Team proposed to me is to come back to us on how to manage within that structure and keep it down, the cost down, and do it correctly. And Brayden brought up those points. People weren't staying in their lanes, including commissioners. And so let's figure out what it is and what it takes to do it right. I'm, oh, and if it says county manager outweighs that, I don't. Plenty of time was irrelevant, uh, because there was no rush before that. There was no rush. The county was functioning. The roads were getting graded with a lot less budget, and it sure opened my eyes a lot more when I got into the nuts and bolts of it on the per mile clause and the salaries that we're paying these heroes to do it, including our sheriff. And so that's where I came from, and I think we owe it to the citizens still. And by the way, I represent the, a bigger room than, than what we have here. I get around, I go places, I do listen to the public. And I'm not doing it because I think it's the right or wrong thing. I do what's right, what for the citizens and what their input is. And if they love a county manager after they see the, how things are, they'll change their minds. I've learned that. That's what we do as good citizens, that follow the, the rule of law, and we're doing that now. I'm glad we straightened out the rule of law in the county now. So I just wanted to make that very clear. It's, I act for what is best for the county, not for Bill Kanda or what, what he thinks is the only answer. Because, because we've got multiple things that we've worked, and I'm throwing in on this, every comment that I made was, was with my heart on it. That is the thing we have to do. Let's make it right. Be it. So there, we're done. I'm done.
You're right. Thank you, sir. I will allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, when I made my presentation, I think all I did was splash a document in front of you. I did not identify it properly. But I would like to do that at this time. And this is from the Colorado Department of Regular Attorney Agencies. And its charge number is B2300016783, and it is a complaint. Well, unfortunately, that's all three of them. When the county commissioners are mentioned in here as well as. So I want you to. Make it fun, sir.
And we are aware of that, yes.
Sir, quick, quick HR question. For, for Bob, where did you get that document, sir?
Yeah, from the man office.
But where did it come from?
I've listened, no, no, nope, we're not going there, period. Not.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Not seeing anything online. Okay, I will recess this meeting. I will move, I will move. Let me get my, that we recess this meeting and go into executive session for legal advice for 24-6-402 for N4, for NV, and also for a matter of negotiations for 24-6-402, or in 4, or in E. Second. We have a motion on the floor in a second to recess this meeting and go into executive session for the purposes stated. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before I vote, go into it or not, do we have the right people going, and do we have the data that we need to understand to talk, discuss this?
Yes, we do. The people that will be in, in this executive session will be Commissioner Day, Commissioner Kanda, Commissioner Flower, clerk to the board Kelly Camper. We will have our attorney, Dan Slater. It was going away. I didn't want to do Kelly on it. And one dance. Is there anyone else required to be at this meeting?
I don't know if we need Brayden or not.
If you want him here, I will include him in that.
Why don't we, I, I think probably.
And our HR Finance Director, Brayden Wilson. That will be the, those that will be in attendance at this executive session. Anything else? verification? I do have one eye. I vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will recess this meeting at 11:08 AM. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody waiting outside to come in?
I think Bob said he would wait around.
I don't see their name.
Okay.
Brother and boy young, they're electric.
They have those names posted this big around the fence that I've never seen them on. Cool.
Are you all set, Jordan? Well, if he's online or not.
Yeah.
Al's eyes are on it, so.
There's people on the right with base hands and says, check, check.
There are?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, if somebody could, I got booted off the thing. Okay, the time is now 12:25 PM. I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Coastal County Board of Commissioners. I will reconvene this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. The participants in the executive session were myself, Commissioner Bill Kanda, Commissioner Tom Flower, Clerk to the Board Kelly Kemper, our county attorney Dan Slater, and HR Finance Director Braden Wilson. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during that executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concernance for the record. Dan, if I could get a statement from you, sir.
I would state affirmatively that everything that occurred in the executive session related to the two items that were mentioned on the agenda specifically, the provision of legal advice and discussion of negotiations pursuant to the statute side of the agenda.
Thank you. And we have. Okay. We do not have Zoom up, but I understand there's someone, somebody with their hand raised, nobody with their hand raised. Okay, that being the case then, there are no other items on our agenda for today. So I would adjourn this meeting at 12:27 PM.